Okay, thanks. Hello, everyone. Welcome to the joint work session of the city council, also acting as the Board of Canvassers for September nineteenth, twenty twenty-three. I really can't believe it's in the middle of September, by the way. And let's review the Board of Canvassers agenda. I guess we'll do the pledge of allegiance there and have the moment of silence. And then Tracy will come up and present, right, Janine? And then we do a voice vote to certify those results. And that starts at five fifty-five. And then at six o'clock, the city council meeting. And we'll have a couple of acknowledgements in that meeting from Diversity Commission, Recognizing We're Human Services Prevention Team, and then also Latinos in Action Honoring Hispanic Heritage Month. Then we have some consent items, the diversity appointments, diversity commission appointments, and the Trails Network Committee appointments. Any questions about any of those items, comments? That's the meeting, then we'll have public comments. All righty. Well, I guess we can go ahead and start on the work session agenda. I'm invite Mayor Brown, our chief administrative officer, to give us an update. Welcome. Maybe should we shut that? Just for a minute, I don't want to rush them away. Oh, no. Yeah, we'll reschedule. It was just a little bit of miscommunication on who invited who.
Nice to be here. Thank you for inviting me to come. Just a real quick follow-up when I start, before I start. We'll have Sarday and Fernando will be the two commissioner members who will be here for the Diversity Commission update. I don't know if you have, but they'll be, they'll be here for that. For the recognitions part. Well, I have a few items I wanted to follow up with you on today, and then whoever else would you like me to? This is our first, kind of my first inaugural.
Yeah.
So, you know, again, well, yay, good to be here, and we'll, we'll just, we'll improvise as we go on these, on these gatherings, and if there's different ways to do it, open to that as well. But I thought I would start, and then we can just open up the floor if you'd like after that. But I did want to report on a couple closure situations that will affect the community first, and I've provided a little bit of additional detail to Janine, so she can help you with that. But there's, we will have a closure of the north parking terrace of the Junction Parking starting next Monday. And that will continue for the next thirty days for repairs, and that's just the top floor only. So the, you know, first, second, and third floors will be open during that time period. But we will be posting these at, you know, at the facility. We've informed all the tenants at the Junction. We've also asked the tenants over there in particular, like fat cats and EOs to just notify, maybe to post in their facilities as well. So hopefully, it might, and I also know there are some residences that, that access. And so, of course, that, that won't be impacted, so that, you know, residents will be able to continue to access up there. It's just the, just the other parking that's available for, for citizens that may park on the top floor.
How long did you say that was for?
It'll be for a month.
Starting?
Starting Monday.
Okay.
Starting Monday, September twenty-fifth.
Thank you.
For a month, so. And if you do have any feedback on that, please let me know, but we're trying to minimize the inconvenience to the public on that and frequent users. And then I will update you on a closure at Union Station and some other updates on some Union Station issues as well. But so we have had some really emergency repair needs at Union Station with their sewer, with their sewer lines. So we're going to be closing that beginning September twenty-fifth, again, Monday, for critical repairs to, you know, to, to the train and sewage systems in and under that facility. So we will be, and we're anticipating that it will remain closed to the public until October eleventh. And that does include the, all the museums as well as used Maple Garden restaurants. So they're, of course, they're aware of the closure. And that closure will be posted on the website for Union Station, the city website, all social media, it'll be posted on the building as well. So but yeah, that's, that's just a critical repair need that, that came up and for the safety of the public, the contractors and the facility. We're going to be closing that for about, I guess, for about, about three weeks there. So, and if you have any concerns or updates on that, or any response on that, you can please let me know about that as well.
What about, it says it doesn't impact the restaurant, too, so they're just closed for that three weeks?
Yeah, it, my understanding there is it, the, the needed repairs are, you know, it directly impacts the restaurant because it does involve some of the grease trap things and all of that. So yep, so that there's no way around the impact to the restaurant as well.
Any questions?
Yeah, what's the cost of the repair?
That I'll have to get back to you on, but yeah.
Nothing else. Okay.
Okay, so on a happier note for Union Station, so I wanted to report on just some questions about, I just have some kind of preliminary information on some celebrations that are going to be occurring really over from November of this year for an entire year until the, until the hundredth birthday celebration of Union Station, which will take place in November of twenty twenty-four. So really, so this is exciting. We're going to be, and I'll offer to have, when this, when the plans get fully worked out, and it's, it's a little bit more permanent, we'd be happy to come back and actually, you know, present that more thoroughly to the council. But I did want to let you know that plans are underway to kick off the hundred-year celebration in November of twenty twenty-three, and there will be a ribbon cutting for an exhibit that's open, you know, that's at the station, and it's actually kind of in the process of being installed right now. But it's a, the exhibit is, you know, features a timeline of events at Union Station and sort of historical events that have occurred in the city and, and, and kind of really from, you know, through the time period of Union Station to the present. So that's exciting, and we'll have the ribbon cutting on that in November. And then the plan is to both have, like, some city events, but to use this year as, as, as an umbrella to incorporate other kinds of events that are also put on by third parties. And so an example of that would be the Hostlers Model Railroad Festival that will be in March of twenty twenty-four. We'll bring that into the hundred-year celebration umbrella. There will be a, there's a Living Heritage Festival also in May of twenty twenty-four. In December, we have the Multicultural Holiday Festival here. That's a, that's a city event. So we'll be kind of both incorporating city events and non-city events under the, under the whole umbrella of the celebrations for, for the coming year. It's one of the exciting things is, is we will be opening the, the cornerstone, like, next June. We'll be inviting, and this will be, you know, a media event, and we'll be kind of inviting the, you know, masons to, to kind of be involved in that because they were involved in the original laying of the cornerstone.
I don't know what that means. So what do they do with the cornerstone?
Oh, just that it will be, because it will be, it will be kind of removed and, and probably replaced with another, like, hundred-year stone.
Oh, cool.
Yeah, so there's a time capsule. So that's the exciting thing about that one. There's a time capsule. Yeah, sorry. Like, the significance of that is, as Janine said, yeah, the significance of that is that there's actually a time capsule involved, so.
Awesome.
Yeah.
Wonder what's in there.
Yeah, so it's, it's exciting, but just a draft of all of those, but that's, that's, there's, there's a, just, there's also some plans for even, you know, a number of oral history projects, doing some more exhibits, including some that celebrate the, the Chinese railroad workers, the history of that. Ramp Free Saturdays will be incorporated into the centennial thread of events. And so that's the, that's the plan right now, is just to kind of put all of these ongoing events over the next year under the umbrella of the hundred-year celebration. Just a thumbnail, a thumbnail sketch on that, but I'm excited about what they have planned and how they're, they're being proactive and, and viewing this. And as I said, we, you know, as I get a little bit, I can notify Janine when we're, we're kind of, you know, getting closer. But if you have some space, you know, before November of this year, then you can come back with, you know, some more finalized plans on that if you're interested.
Sounds good.
Okay, great. And now I did want to give some information about some concerns that we've been having about the, the new Jack in the Box.
Oh, yes.
So, yay, we'll just tackle this one today.
Awesome. Let's do it.
Yeah. Okay. We've, we've been, administration has been very involved in the, in the situation at, at Jack in the Box. There have been a couple of the concerns have to do with, like, traffic and parking. Those are, those are really the main concerns that we've been hearing. And the, some of it has to do with some traffic backing up onto Harrison, which I don't know. I observed that a couple of times myself. I don't drive by that way every day to know if it's happening every day, but I, I've seen that myself a couple of times. And then the other reports are of a parking that is infringing on adjacent businesses, both Hug Hess and The Great Harvest right there. So so our staff, our, our code enforcement staff has been working out there, and we've also asked our planning team to do some evaluation of, of, of really what has led to this situation as best as we can tell. So I will start with what we've, how we've basically determined what has led to this point, and then I'll let you know what we're, what we've been doing about it. So what we've determined is that there, the grand opening rush has exceeded the design capacity of the site. We hope that that does die down a little, and we were notified in a traffic study that was received that it was anticipated, because this is the first of its kind of this business in northern Utah, that, that we were anticipating there to be higher than normal traffic volume during the, you know, the grand opening and the weeks following. So, so that part really wasn't unanticipated. What was unanticipated is that the facility is not operating as it was designed. So we are, we have been, and that, that we'll get to, I'll talk to you about what we've been doing about that. But that, that is something that, that is, is a fact. So it has to do with what they, with what they presented, and as far as where the, the onsite, like, queuing of vehicles was, was intended to go based on the site plan, and then what is actually happening on the ground. And so we're working with that team, and I'll talk to you about a little bit more. So they were approved for eleven parking spaces. And the other issue that has happened is that three of those parking spaces was, had been blocked off with a pod storage. And according to just more, like, today, there is one pod that's still there. And so I'll talk to you about that in just a minute. But those, those are the, the kind of two things that we've identified after reviewing the plans that were submitted, the traffic study that we received, and what has been happening on the ground. So it's, it's really, I think, the, probably the number one is, is the facility is not being operated as, as presented and as designed. So what we're doing about it is we have had our code enforcement out there several times. And so we've, we've, we've met with the manager. And we are, we are enforcing the matter the way it was intended to be, to be laid out. So as of yesterday, we have had our code, Chris Tramaya, actually, our building service manager, has personally been out to the property on several, several, seven different occasions. And on each one had noticed the violations, including the site plan and the pods. And so what they're doing is they've, they've met with the, the manager and their regional manager. But we have issued a citation for the pods. And we're continuing to monitor the site and our plan, our planning to continue to enforce, enforce if necessary, but that's what's happening. So we, in addition to doing that, there's a couple of changes that you're going to see. And that is, there will be some new striping on forty-eight hundred. There has been parking on, in the, kind of, they call it the fog lanes on either side. But that, but there were plans to re-stripe that, which will widen the median, but also make it narrower on the travel lanes for parking to happen on either side. Now, we're aware that without parking there, that could impact surrounding businesses. So we're also working with surrounding businesses on their signage, and we'll, we'll continue to work with them and talk to them about what a signage. And this is something that I think you've probably, we've probably all visited commercial businesses where, where, where you might have signed it saying, you know, these, these spaces are reserved for customers of X location, any, you know, X location, and that, that can be enforced. But that's something that probably for many, many years, those surrounding businesses didn't have to take those steps. It's, it's new, probably caught them off guard, and it, you know, some of the constraints that I've talked about, that have caught us off guard as well because of the inconsistency with the plan. But so we've been out to meet with both Hug Hess and Great Harvest about how to handle, you know, their own parking that's reserved for their customers.
Can I just ask a follow-up question? So I'm guessing, I'm not nice for this, but I'm guessing that that is private property where their parking currently is, right? So they can limit parking in those spaces.
Yeah, that would be my understanding, right. It's not, they, they can limit that. It might not be that, I don't, I don't know how it works within. So if you, if you take that strip mall where Hug Hess
Right.
is located, there are several other businesses in there, but so it might not be, Hug Hess can say, like, this is reserved, but for Hug Hess. But it can be that all of those spaces collectively are reserved for patrons of, of that, you know, of that
Right.
that strip mall, or whatever, how they want to word it, and we're, we've reached out to them a couple of times and can, can assist with some wording for that. But we will continue to, to monitor that situation, and I'm happy to report back on that. But I did want to let you know that that's, that's kind of what, what we've determined right now and how we've been working with it right now.
So you have a question, but I just have one more follow-up. I was wondering, do you know if the Jack in the Box folks have reached out to any of those other businesses on earth to try to help or say sorry, or I don't know.
I, I don't know. I don't know what they've done on their side. All I know is, is what, yeah, what administration.
Looks like several people have questions, yeah, over there.
I have a couple of questions. So it is the, I mean, the drive-up line, but was it their idea to not stick to the intended drive-up plan, or is it, this one work? I don't know, in their eyes, better? Like, why did they not follow that plan? Is my first question.
Yeah, as far as I'm aware, what we've been able to determine is that there was miscommunication between the onsite manager and their corporate office who submitted the plans and assisted with that.
Okay, and then I believe, from what I have heard and seen, I think the parking issue is based, is because their employees are parking, they're trying not to park in front of Jack in the Box, so they park in these other businesses, and that's been the problem. When we do a site plan, do we take into account the automobiles for their employees and stuff like that? Like, I don't, it sounds like if they only have eleven parking stalls, that wasn't adequate to begin with.
Yes, and I, what we, what we had believed is that they have adequate parking for their employees. And so on the parking, I clarified that we haven't changed our parking requirements, but there, there, it is a bit of a new category where it's not, you know, we have two categories of restaurants. One would be of, of these types of restaurants, let's say, like a fast food with a drive-through that, that might have a sit-down as well. And then you might have just a regular serving food and beverages inside a building without a drive-through. So both, both of those are what we currently have, but those are categories do, do contemplate that these types of restaurants will have, like, both indoor dining and drive-through. So this, this is unique. And when they came to present to us, they said that they're unique because they were all drive-through, and they did say, or walk-up.
Walk-up.
And that, that, that we were assured that the proposal would meet the needs of how many employees they have on there, and then the occasional walk-up, but that it was majority going to be a drive-through. So we, you know, we made, we made a decision on that, that we felt was adequate based on their traffic study that we received and the other information that we had at the time.
And then just one more clarifying. It, it's their pod that's on the parking.
Yeah, it was their pods, and they should be removed by the end of the week.
Okay.
Okay. Yeah, that's what we're hoping for, but I'll be continuing to report back.
So to follow up with that, I'm just curious, because going through a renovation of a house, I can't get building occupancy until I meet the city's requirements, right? I can't, I have to have a sink, I have to have this, I have to have that. How is it that they got that far in our process? And then we gave them occupancy when we knew that it, maybe we didn't know that. I mean, how did we not know that that wasn't built to the right specs? Yeah, until after, I guess.
That's a good point, and what I, what I don't know, that's an excellent question, and I will report back on that. So what I don't know is whether, is it not construct, is, is it constructed to plans, but just the, the circulation pattern different? And so that, that, so I'll find out, or was it actually not, the, 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 the building location is that different as well? But what I know right now is at least the circulation pattern isn't consistent. But I'll, I'll find out if that's something that we could have determined prior to occupancy.
And are we changing that now? I mean, have we stuck the, the wrong circulation pattern, or are we?
We are working with them, I believe, to go back to the, you know, I'll find that out, but I think we're trying to get them back to the site plan, the circulation as presented, so.
I think I would have a question, or maybe I would even question the, that we're different because we're drive-through only with the walk-up. Whether somebody's eating inside or outside, they're still having that walk-up. And what I've, what I've observed is people parking in the Hug Hess and, and the neighboring communities and walking across the street. And so, again, maybe it's just the influx of, this is new to the area, and that'll die down. But it seems like there's quite a few, every time I've been by there, there's a lot of people standing outside waiting for their orders or waiting to order.
Yeah.
And so it seems to function a lot very similar to a the regu, yeah, the in and out, or the, you know, whoever, what other, other fast food restaurants, so.
Yeah, and it's a problem and a concern for us, and if we need to do it better next time, or currently, we'll do the best we can with the situation we have, but if we need to make some changes to do this better, then next time, we certainly will.
Almost seems like, too, on that, on that, on their parking pads, I need to put for, that, you know, like, this spot is for our employees only. And then the Hug Hess and all those folks put up signs, but I mean, that's probably a huge cost to them. That's what I was kind of thinking, is I wonder if Jack in the Box, just to be a good neighbor, could say, hey, could we help, we have a good deal on sign manufacturing or something, I don't know, to help them since it's impacting those businesses that have already invested so much in our community and been here for a long term. It seems like if they have to put signage up across that whole parking lot, that's going to be a huge cost. And I don't know if they're condos, or I don't know how that's arranged, but seems like a big cost to put up a lot of signs unless they just put them right at the entrance or something like that. Like, don't park here unless you're going to these businesses. But then, also then, how do you enforce that? Do they have to call the police to enforce it? I mean, I guess.
Yeah.
I guess you could, yeah.
Company.
Yeah, you could have the towing company, and they can make a ton of cash off of that, I guess.
Our predatory towing ordinance is gonna not, it's not affecting for that, that's the problem.
Yeah, but did you have something?
I'll just, how long does this phenomenon last with?
New businesses?
This demand for this, for Jack in the Box. Where I grew up, we have Jack in the Box everywhere, so there isn't a phenomenon. But so how long does this demand last? Did, did corporate share any of that?
Oh, personally, no, I don't, I don't, I don't know how, or how long this sort of surge, surge demand, I, that's a good question.
So, yeah, I don't know, like, when is the popular time, man?
Yeah, I don't know either. I, I do know that, that, that what we were informed of is that, that it's anticipated that there is, that, that queuing, well, they said actually just queuing on and shortly after opening day, maybe longer than normal. But so that means that there is a normal that didn't anticipate this type of queuing.
People are very excited.
Yeah, I mean, that's, I don't know what normal is, but apparently, like, that isn't the norm.
Yeah, that's why I'm asking.
Drop down.
Clearly, our ordinance and site plan is based on norm, normal.
Based on historic demands.
How much longer are we in this abnormal phase?
Yeah, so, yeah, so it'll be interesting, I guess. It's up to, well.
Do you have something else?
Demand dies at some point.
What'd you say?
So I do have a question, I guess, and it relates to, are we going to start fining them? And if so, maybe those, those are some of the dollars we can spend towards signage or helping out or signing.
And Mayor, I have a question. Could they, could the city require them to close their walk-up? So that only people, drive-throughs can come, because that seems like that's what's causing the problem, is people are parking and walking up just like they would at Burger Bar, but Burger Bar has enough parking for those people to park there.
Maybe temporarily at least, while, you know, the situation is getting remedied, and it's not the norm.
It's always, yeah, they name it, they got it. Just like Burger Bar. We did fine him for the pods, for the pod. So is that, like, if it's still there in two weeks, does that increase? Do they get another fine? Like, what's the timeline on that?
Yeah, and it, it would be, there is a progressive violation in our ordinance
Okay.
in city code, so it would be progressive, as I said. So we are our code enforcement officer are, are directed to continue monitoring and enforcing as, as that is required by our, our city code.
That's what I figured.
But we, we were hoping that, and we were informed that, that, that that would be resolved by the end of this week. But as of today, there is one on there right now, apparently.
Also, just my other question is, I remember in some of the correspondence, something about how we've changed the parking regulations so that this was allowed, and I just wasn't sure, you know, because there's claims that we're giving them special privilege, since other people did have parking requirements that were different. I don't know if you can speak to that at all.
Yeah, I, I can speak to, that, the parking requirements have not been changed. It, it just has to do with the nature of this business as, as not having any sit-down space. And, and so it's a, it's a different, our, our regulations, our parking requirements are, are different. And however, if there are, it's something that we need to look at if they would need to be changed to accommodate this type of a restaurant that has zero sit-down as opposed to circulation plus sit-down. But this, this is a unique type for Ogden. I don't believe that we have any right now that are circulation only.
I think there's another one, maybe that, it's in South Ogden, right, the Cafe Rio, that's only drive-through. I mean, of course, there's plenty of parking around that, but can't think of another one, no.
Yeah, I mean, there are, yeah. Yeah, I mean, there are, yeah, so it's a little bit, little bit different as as far as a fast food restaurant, probably a little different than like. The Daily Rise or something, it would be, that might be a different situation when you have like a coffee shop versus like a fast food restaurant.
Right.
So this is, this is like the the fast food, it's called like fast food with with drive through, it's a little different than, so.
Any other questions?
So has the owner of this. Restaurant been cooperating or, I mean, is it something?
I was kind of curious, is it a franchise or is it just corporate?
I I mean.
I don't know.
Are they being a good. Restaurant citizen in our city?
Um. I would say they are cooperating to the extent they're meeting with code enforcement, so they haven't been avoiding the issue. And they indicated they're gonna make some changes.
Do you know if it's a franchise or is it like just corporate?
I don't know.
Well, thanks for that update, it certainly concerned and a safety issue for sure with those pedestrians wandering back and forth on that. There's definitely a lot more traffic in that area than there in a while.
Yeah, so we'll continue.
Well.
They haven't met the same demand that Jake's had those last few days.
So we'll for sure continue to monitor that and I'm happy to. Report back again if needed, or you can call me in the in the interim if if um. Doesn't seem to be getting better and you wonder what the status is between these reports. Happy to provide.
Has anybody been corresponding with the person that's been writing to us?
I've had some communication with the podcast, yeah.
Do you want to do?
Yeah.
Thanks. Great.
Okay, so we will, we'll continue to work on that, but it's certainly a concern that we have as well. Um one other item, um I just wanted to give you, um you know, this is, this is, it's probably not something that will. Have a a negative impact on our residents and and there'll be more information at a later date, but um we have, um we're going to be. Just changing the location of our lockbox for utility bills from from Seattle to Ogden City Municipal. Building, um we had a con- Jenny reminded me I'd mentioned that, but I think we had one comment on this. Many years ago, somebody asked, why does this go all the way to Seattle and then coming back again, but uh it was just. A requirement of of the banking, you know, the banking system that we use at the time where there. Where the checks were mailed, but we're we're going to be changing that, so it's a it's a process that will will kind of. If anybody's ever done an address change, you know, these things take time, but we'll be providing a lot of advance notice to. Our utility customers about where their bills need to be mailed, so especially if anybody has. Um you know, direct bill pay from their bank and they need to make that, but it it won't happen overnight, you know, there'll be be a several month. Process of of notification, just let like, you know, three months from now, like please. Mail everything to the municipal building, you know, so making sure that happens and we'll probably put stickers on. Utility bills or send emails to those that we have emails for, bless you. Um or just a variety of ways that will notify that on the website, on social media and just doing all that, so I don't, I don't affect it uh impact that, you know. Anticipate it'll have a a negative impact, in fact, the the goal is it'll have a positive impact on people who want to pay. Here at the mun- municipal building in per- in person, so we'll be processing the checks here.
I mean, I remember that was a possibility, is there a possibility to pay here now?
Right now, um right now, the like checks are mailed, you might be able to to do a payment over the phone or. Uh on the website or some other things, but if um it'll it'll just, the checks will be processed here, so it'll make it a little bit more convenient. For individuals to come in if they they choose to.
So lockbox to me connotates the, it was being sent somewhere, they were scanning it, they were keeping it. Um it was getting deposited into our bank, yeah, um so I'm assuming we have savings of. Because of that.
Yeah, we'll be saving about um fifteen thousand dollar a year on that, but it's it's kind of more also about about um just. Sort of, you know, staffing, um you know, cost savings are 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 one of those, one of those reasons, but. Um also, um it it uh just uh. Made sense to to offer some additional, you know, payment uh options for our our customer. Customers to, you know, to be able to to make payments here and. Um not have to, you know, because we've we've had a few comments, maybe it may be more to utility directly than the council, I've heard, but just about. That the time, maybe it takes a little bit longer for it to get mailed to Seattle and it hits. Hits our account and that that um just additional time might might make a difference for some of our customers. Small thing, but I thought I would give you a heads up on that and.
For some people it's big, I agree, and then people are always asking, so I started bringing this up, we're talking about it, um they'd like an easier way to do auto pay.
Hmm.
On their water bill. I have the form still sitting on my desk, to be honest, at home, and I keep meaning to bring it in or drop it off, it's like a paper form that you have to fill out. And then drop off to get automatic withdrawal. So yes, I have been late a couple of times on my water bill, not shut off yet, but.
Okay.
My own personal problem.
I'll find out about that, um. Okay.
I I I guess my question was, I had always understood the lockbox was required by the bank and that it was a cost saving, so. But you're saying that we will save money by not using that lockbox, even though we'll now process them, we'll have to. Are we hiring somebody to process those or is there already existing people that will do that job?
Um so the processing of the checks will now be just, will be done by our our U B and our cashiering staff. So they'll be the ones to, you know, receive the the checks and actually process that and they have the um they have the um. The skills and the um.
They have the bandwidth.
The time, the bandwidth to do that, so. We'll be just doing it here in-house and it was a requirement of of the bank in the past, but we're gonna be taking that on. Keep a local. Okay, well, that was, uh those were the items that I had prepared for you today, so.
I'll be the, so I I haven't, I haven't, and. I have a Doug Stevens question because I got a constituent asking me about the uh old Fred Meyer space. So I I don't know if we have any updates to that, but I. I don't know if there's any updates or not, just.
Hey. The answer to that is is no, we have no new updates on that one, but as we do, we will inform the council. So I will put that on my radar.
And it's still the same owner, right? The same uh healthcare owner or whatever?
Yeah. Supposing it's the same owner.
I have a question also, that's okay.
Yes.
Um I was on the uh, I was on a tour with uh. How's it here, the Transportation Subcommittee at WACOG the other day and. We were presented with a plan of what's going on uh with with the old Wayne's Guard site. And my understanding was we were trying to put together an R D A and work with them to elevate the. The project, have some round four commercial and stuff like that, but we don't have the R D A and apparently we have a plan. I haven't seen it officially, it's just kind of an unofficial thing, I'm not sure if it's officially been. Um requested, has it been? Um what what are we doing there? What, I guess that's my big question was.
See, um I can come back on that or would would you like to come up for, if you have some additional information, I'll have Brandon Cooper come up. Thanks, Brandon.
Welcome, Brandon.
Thanks, um you and I have talked about an R D A in the uh Five Points area for a while, it is necessary, it's on our list. We've gotten no um uh active R D A development applications for TIF assistance in that area. Um ever, uh so we've talked to a number of developers over the years that have been have had interest in doing things. And there has been some projects um that are actually have been built or might be under construction. That have not needed tax increment, but as far as an active project that has an active request, I don't know of any.
So what did I see the other day? It was our um. Uh Samian in uh one of one of Justin's people, that those they're kind of presenting what they're ax- asking for. Um you know, WACOG money for the second street development, but they they've kind of brought this thing up because it was sort of a an important issue with. Um street frontage, driveways, stuff like that. And so I didn't know if it was the thing that we originally saw. Three years ago or a year and a half ago when they were asking for a street vacation, so what you're telling me is there is no new application.
Barton might have um a land use application.
That's what I'm, that's what I'm asking.
There's no TIF app- application, I thought you were talking about.
We would, we would try and get to happen, you know, is it. Work with them to to encourage them to get that TIF thing going, so we can have something that's just. Um not just a bunch of four-story apartments again.
So I'm not actually sure who the applicant is, they haven't reached out to us. Um from on the R D A to to say, here's our project, this is what we'd like to do, can we enhance it with TIF? But maybe that's something we ought to be reaching out to them about.
I I agree.
And the the land use application's been approved, they do have a site plan for the apartment project that's on the project. The site, it's just it doesn't require TIF or they didn't ask for TIF.
Oh, okay.
Your mic's off. Okay, up next, it looks like Barton, before you sit down, sorry, you sat down too fast, you were too quick, um you're up next, oh, thank you.
Okay, great.
Thank you so much, Mara, I'm sorry.
Yeah, you're very welcome and um this, I think it'll work out well, let me know if there's a different, different structure you'd like or, you know.
No, that was great, we got some objects we didn't know about and then we got the follow up on some of the items that we've been getting correspondence about, so we really appreciate it.
Sounds great, well, thank you for the opportunity.
Awesome. Okay, now that Barton, um you're gonna talk with us about proposed zone tax amendments for use and development standards in M one and M two zones.
Okay, thank you, so we are proposing changes to the standards in the M one and M two industrial zones. And the planning commission is recommending that you adopt the changes that we're proposing. So we started with the basic question, are the uses that we're getting in the M one and M two industrial zones. Are they adding the most value that we can get to Ogden or? Or even are they adding any value or are they even detracting, taking away value from Ogden? We really have a limited amount of industrial land and we're not expanding out to the hinterlands, so. It's important that we make the best use of the land that's available. And just where M one and M two, it's largely along the railroad tracks on along the west side of Ogden or those industrial zones. The M one is the limited manufacturing zone. And the purpose that is there is to accommodate a range of industrial activities that are limited intensity and provide a diversified. Employment base and those are the ones that are less impactful, so the primary purpose is to provide employment. And M two is for the uses that may have more impact, take more land and have a broad mix of industry. Uh but it's, both of them are, one of the primary purposes is to provide employment. So the benefits of those, uh they provide places for businesses to operate, that the enhance our economy. They provide employment for local residents, they generate tax revenue, both in property tax and sales tax. That support our community, uh many industrial businesses provide support for other local businesses. So one might uh machine parts for another manufacturer that puts them into their products. Or provides storage or other things for them and some are uses that. Uh provide services for local residents. You might be familiar with uh this picture that uh Urban Three did a few years ago that looked at. The value per acre of land in Ogden and you can see that. Various uses uh have very high value, really downtown Ogden is the highest value property in all of. Uh Weaver County, uh and you see the rest of Ogden has value and the uh industrial areas, we. Looked at the same sort of analysis, just how, what's the value per acre, how much are we getting out of our industrial land? And so we did a quick survey and saw that things like uh, you know, outdoor storage and junkyards and outdoor industrial. Uh have really a very low property tax per acre. Um manufacturing warehouse have much higher value per acre. Uh personal storage, actually, because they have a lot of buildings, uh have more taxable value. But if you look at things like employment, you know, personal storage has very low employment.
On that last slide, what was F A R?
Oh, Florida area ratio, so uh that's just the ratio of building to the land.
What's the difference between outdoor storage and personal storage?
Uh so outdoor storage might be for businesses, it might be where there's storing trucks or or. Supplies or lumber or anything like that, personal storage is for residents to go and rent a space. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Make sure I understood the difference.
Yeah, self-storage or mini-storage. Uh and you look at the employment, those self-storage or personal storage, you know, very low employment per acre. Um like one twentieth of what a manufacturing operation would have, and so when we're looking at uses that. One of the primary purposes of these zones provide employment, just which ones actually provide that employment, um you know, the manufacturing warehouse actually. Has some trades do, uh but things like junk salvage yards and personal storage have very little employment per acre. So we looked at, should we make any changes or recommend any changes to these various uses? Uh the outdoor uses, they have low taxable value because there isn't much building there to tax. May even have very low employment and may have a lot of environmental impacts. So things like uh junk or salvage yards, um those are ones that same have low taxable value, have limited employment and. Can do environmental impacts, so the proposal would be to not allow new. Junk or salvage yards, this, I want to emphasize, this would not. Uh shut down any of the existing ones, they can continue, they. In operation, I know we got a lot of questions about the planning mission, how does it affect what I'm doing today and the answer is it doesn't affect what you're doing today, it looks. But if somebody wanted to take a vacant piece of property and say, hey, I want to make that a new salvage yard. If this is a man adopted, then the answer would be no. So existing can remain and just the reason why, again, very low property tax value for those sorts. Compared to other uses. Um I know it was brought up that they they do provide sales tax revenue and they do, I I checked it out and yes, when you do a. You know, like you're doing salvage parts, you pay sales tax on those, so we do get sales tax revenues. Uh it's just for the amount of land and the the value, um it's relatively small. And the employment, again, they do employ people there, they're good jobs and people work there and uh. And they're good employers, uh but just per acre, it's it's relatively quite low. And the environmental concerns, this is just kind of the typical thing, the biggest thing is what comes off these vehicles, you know, there can be mercury and. And hydrocarbons and acids and other things that come out of whatever you're recycling. Can go into the ground and I'll say there are some operators here who are just squeaky clean, they take care of their facilities. They are very attentive to everything, they operate within all the best management practices and and they're really great at doing what they do. Others not so much, um we are, you know, we have one uh recycling facility now that we have. Had to push the state, we've we've had our code enforcement people out there, there's there's seriously environmental problems, so. It it depends on how good of an operator you have.
Barton, is that, is that something the city regulates or are there other regulators that come and onsite visits on those things?
Uh the city regulates it, the state regulates it and uh the federal government regulates it. Um our experiences with the state. Our experiences with the state, getting the state to enforce things has been disappointing. We've really had to push and say, hey, look at this, even though there's been very clear violations. They've been kind of a hands-off on it, which is, we've really had to push state regulators to. To deal with the issues.
You know what that is? Are they like, they don't have the resources or they?
I could only speculate if it's, it's resources, if it's desire, if it's, you know. They're getting pressure from above to, you know, be hands-off with businesses or things like that. I, I don't know. It's, I can only speculate.
My experience, they get pressured not to regulate by political emphasis. And the more they regulate, the more their authority is what he's back. So I think, I don't know if it's an issue of authority or an issue of pressure, but. Maybe a little bit of push and pull there.
But again, I, I don't want to cast a broad net to everybody because there are businesses that do a really good job. Uh, but there are those that don't. Um, one of the questions was, well, you know, we all use cars. They all have a life. Where do they go? And. Um, there are options in the area. Uh, Ogden seems to have a big concentration of days, so. Just overall, we think there's just better use of land in Ogden that we can get more value than allowing more salvage yards. Um, other things like auto repair, towing and impound lots, sort of same use. It's very low use of land. Not a lot of value there. Um, they're needed, you know, my car gets, needs fixed and you need to go. Have a place to fix it. And so uh, just limiting, proposing to limit the amount of storage you can have on a. Auto repair lots, you know, if you have ten fifteen cars that you're repairing, great. If you have a hundred. That's more storage. Uh, same with towing in pound. We want those to, to move that just we don't consume a lot of land with. Those sorts of uses.
What are the current limitations? None or?
Uh, in auto, it's like. It's like fifty percent of the site or eighty percent of the site can be used for it. So you know, you can have, if you have a ten acre site, you could have. Acres and acres of it. So we, we saw that as a real problem. And we also looked at other uses like RV storage, you know, it's a. It's a very low value use. Uh, but we also looked at is, as an interim use that. Somebody has a vacant lot and they allow RV storage there. And then another business came in. It's like, as long as there's not a lot of improvements there. More of an in, a interim use. Our code actually doesn't allows it as long as you don't have a building there, which is consistent with that. Um, technically that doesn't allow you to have an office. So uh, we're changing, we propose to change that so that you could have an office.
Why, why not cover? I didn't get it.
Just so that we're really looking at, this is a very low value use that uh. That we want to go away at some point. We'd rather have a manufacturer come in and use this land or a. Another business with more employment, more, more building, more taxable value. So.
Can those uses happen under the current ordinance?
Yes, yeah.
So that space could be used for that if manufacturer want to come in by the RV lot.
Yes, okay, yeah.
Do we have, do we have those demands on this space, but there's no space to do it currently or?
Well, we're, we have our business developments always looking to attract businesses and find locations for them. And so, yeah, I mean, they're. Constantly talking with businesses to get them to come in for that. So we're just looking at this as an interim use. And we do have interim lots and.
So if we allowed the covers, it would chip into that interim, easy transition and use?
Yes, yeah, that's the idea.
Okay, thanks. I'm just trying to understand.
You know, same thing with manufactured home display is just a uh, an interim use and actually provide some sales tax. And then. If there's another business that came in. Um, outdoor manufacturing, you need a certain amount of outdoor manufacturing in your community because you just need. You know, you need concrete and things like that. Uh, but the proposal would increase the buffer standards if it's next residential. And then personal storage, uh, it's a use. As I noted that there's very low employment. So for zones where we're trying to attract employment, uh, it doesn't generate a lot. It is a service for local residents. I have used personal storages. I, it's been convenient for me. Uh, the property tax value is pretty modest on those. Uh, so we looked at uh, currently personal storage, we have a lot in Ogden. Based on some studies that I, I've read that we have about what you'd expect for our community. For a market. Um, so based on really the very low employment, really modest, uh. Property tax, you know, very little sales tax and the facilities we have now. Uh, we started out saying, you know, is this really the best use of land that we can make for industrial land? And we felt that, no, it wasn't. So uh, we started with, hey, we'll just, we should just propose prohibiting new facilities. Um, we modified that after talking that uh, we do have some facilities, like we have some. Right in the middle of our downtown, couple of storage facilities that really shouldn't be in our downtown. And uh, we, so we thought we'd provide an incentive that somebody bought that facility. And wanted to redevelop one downtown and they wanted to put, move that to industrial area that we would allow that as. A trade-off. Actually, we proposed two for one, so you could actually double the size if you, if you did that as an incentive. Um, some facilities are already built and you want to do a little expansion like this one. Looks like there's set up for. An expansion already that we'd allow minor expansion of existing facilities. Uh, also this idea of upper floor storage that. Uh, there's quite a few around now, it used to be all storage units were single stories, but. There's more businesses doing upper floor. And this is one uh, in the Salt Lake area that has a ground floor. It's a all business space and up floor is storage. Now you have to have an elevator to do that. But if we could get that in there, industrial areas where you have some ground floor where, you know, a contractor could use some space or. Small manufacturer could use a space on the ground floor and they want to do upper floor. The proposal would say, yes, you could do that. And we also looked at, you know, over time, Ogden grows, we get more apartments, you know, we'll need more. And so if there is population growth that we could allow more based on that. Uh, we also looked at the various sort of customer service uses that are allowed in industrial areas. And you know, some are needed, you know, it's good to have a place to eat if you're in. If you're working in the establishment, um, some is kind of questionable whether they're really. Appropriate there. So one of the ones we looked at uh, was the athletic club thing. Um, athletic clubs, they really like to go in industrial area because it's. Big ceilings, uh, big space, cheap rents. And so there's a lot of inquiries about that. Uh, but we also looked at, are they taking up space that a business that would provide more employment? Bring more into the community. Would use rather than that. And also sort of the, the environment there where you've got. Forklifts and big trucks and then you've got, you know, a little dance studio for your toddlers. Is that really the environment that you want?
Are you thinking about, is this suggesting to remove that then?
Yes, to, to not allow new ones, again, existing ones to stay. But. Yeah, we're proposing that those not be allowed in those industrial zones, but rather that they be allowed in commercial zones where you do have. Uh, you do have space available these days and you do have, you know, you don't have those conflicts. They're really designed for customers to come in and out. And these are a couple of examples of facilities in Ogden that have been converted to. Those sort of uh, facilities. Um, we just approved one downtown. There's a project right next to Lindquist Field where they're doing a ground floor. Um, they're doing pickleball courts and ground floor. So.
Can you, can you, I think I heard you say your rationale. Can you tell me again your rationale for this one? I mean, you said that is the forklifts and people move because there's cheaper rent and doesn't seem to fit in the area because, right? But. Is that, is that it? Because I, I wonder if when we talk about health centers, uh, you know, it kind of feels like. The community, maybe there's a need for these and the community is going to places where they can afford it. Um, you know, indoor recreation, mental health, youth sports, uh, uh, family recreation. If they, if they're not finding the right spaces in the city in this, in these areas, because these are just three examples. Two of them are big boxes. They're not for nothing small, right? Uh, that a small, you know, a small business could afford to do really. So I'm just curious if there's been enough thought. Behind this one to, to weigh out the, the needs of the community. You know, put, put it, put enough thought behind it to know, are, are we, are we shutting down opportunities? Are we. Not providing enough opportunities for people? And are we going to take away uh, uh, in the future? Uh, more of these opportunities and how, how are we going to replace it, right? I'm just curious if you guys gave that some thought.
Yeah, uh, the, the two things are, we have industrial zones, manufacturing zones for manufacturing and industrial uses. And if those spaces that we have are taken up by gyms and, and athletic clubs and stuff like that. That's just more space that a business, that a manufacturer or a contractor doesn't have available to them. And so we're limiting the amount of businesses of that kind of business. That could go into that space. And, and the second thing is those spaces really, those environments aren't really set up for, you know. Like I said, you know, the toddlers.
But, but I would, I would push back on, on, on both of your points. On the, the second one is if they're not set up for it, I would say why. It, have you had problems? Have there been any serious concerns?
Um, not that reported to us of.
So I would question why, why they're not set up for it, right? My, my son goes to a boxing gym in Clearfield. And it's a, it's a warehouse. And it's for exactly the reasons that you're talking about, right? Because it's cheaper, right? All those things that you described. And so I'm wondering about what problems are, you know. You know, maybe we need better articulation on that. Uh, and then the first one, your first argument about not having enough space for manufacturing industrial, then. It's just about a, a matter of priority here. Right? So, so I get it, right? If those places are designated for that, I understand. We're trying to accommodate more of those uses there, but we can ignore the fact that there's a, apparently a big need for, for these, right? If people are going and using them for that. And so I think we need a, a balanced approach before we, before we completely. Right? Remove it or scrap it or whatever, right? We, we just need to be really thoughtful and.
Okay, thank you.
I, I, I've got a question kind of about that. I, I've been kind of holding my questions. Maybe I should have been asking them all along, but.
I forget.
You know, the, the uh.
I'm gonna write them down now.
The idea that uh, these are happening in manufacturing zones, seems like it's, it's purely a cost thing. You know, because commercial is, is more expensive, it's harder to do it there. Um, there may be less commercial to, to do this kind of thing. I mean, they do take up a lot of space. I, I guess my, I'm sitting there thinking, if I owned the property, if I was the owner, I'm, you know, it's private property. And it's a reasonable use. It's, it's, it's kind of zoned. It, it's apparently a, a use that is. That people want, you know, they're going to come and support my business. Seems like maybe we're, we might be getting a little heavy-handed in saying, well, you can only do this because. Um, the city wants the revenue. Um, uh, you know, I think we've got to have a balance of, of, of things going on in the, in the city. Some of them are going to make more money than others to the city. But, but I don't think it's something that we can pick and say, well, we want all the big ticket items in the city and nothing else. Or just throw everything else out. I, philosophically, that just seems wrong. To the, and I'm not picking on you per se. I just throwing this out because I think it's, it's a, it's a thought that's kind of marinated in my brain. You know, I've got a, I own a fifteen-year-old pickup truck. It's in great shape for a fifteen-year-old truck. It's got forty-four thousand miles on it. But I went to get a part and they don't make parts for that pickup anymore. So the only way I'm going to get parts is from one of those. Salvage lots. And I think that's kind of a trend that is, that is happening more and more. I mean, auto suppliers used to make parts for. A lot longer period of time, supported a vehicle for, you know, many more years than fifteen. So that kind of concerns me some. The other is, uh, you know, I've, I've used uh, storage lots for. Uh, my, my winter toys in the summer and my summer toys in the winter, and they're not going on a second floor. They're not going to go there. They have, you know, they're gonna have to be on the ground floor. And so there again, if I'm a private property owner, I, I see that I have a piece of property. I want to put some storage units on there because I'm. Maybe I'm getting old and I don't want to have to hire a bunch of employees and I can do that with my wife and I. It seems like I'll be able to do that. So I, I guess I'm just having a hard time with the philosophy that's driving this change. And, and maybe you can't even address it. I don't know, but um.
Can I speak to your point? Your first point was better articulated than mine probably could be, so I'm gonna add on to that. Because that's why I asked the question about the demand. Are we seeing demand for these types of uses in the manufacturing zone that do have more value? And if that demand happens, can those uses still occur in some of these interim, open space, outdoor storage? Sort of low intensity use areas. And I think the answer is yes, it can. And so. I guess it's a philosophy. It's do we create the zone that is accommodates the demand when the demand comes? Or do we have the zone that accommodates the current demand, which is, I guess is the current use? And then when that future preferred demand comes, then we just transition to it under the same zoning. Uh, and then to your point about recreation, I think about like a tip-top athlete, that's the name of a indoor training facility. It's a lot like the boxing gym. That's a, that's a very important need in, in a service that, that most recreation programs aren't providing. And they go there because the space is cheap. It's a, it's just a big box and they put turf in it and hang some nets and then they can do those activities. And they charge quite a bit already and it's already cost prohibitive for a lot of kids. But if we force those kinds of uses into the commercial zone, it's going to increase those costs for kids. And there's just going to be families that don't have access to the services anymore. So, and then in terms of. The land value, I also wonder if we're looking at it a little bit wrong because. We're looking at that value of the M one, the M two compared to the higher value areas around it. But I kind of wonder if those high values would exist if they didn't have complimentary services that were provided in the low value areas too. Do you know what I mean? Like, wonder if we're comparing apples and oranges by looking at it that way. So I don't know, I'm just kind of struggling philosophically with. Putting the current land owner into such a big and heavy pivot when they've. You know, businesses need certainty. So I, that, that really just worries me a lot.
Yeah, I'd just say that none of those uses are we saying you can't come in Ogden. It's really about where. And um, you know, yes, you, you need a place to pick up a used part. Does Ogden have enough of that already? I, I think we do. And you know, do we need places for gyms? Yes, absolutely. Do we need mini storages? Yes, we do. Uh, do we need ground floor? Yes, we do. Uh, do we need ground floor? Yes, we do. Um, and we have 15 facilities where you can, you know, rent a ground floor. So I, it's not saying no to any of those. But if that land, if we have businesses that are economic development folks are trying to, trying to bring here and the land's being used for a lower value use, they just won't go there. They'll go to Provo or Roy or Brigham City or somewhere else.
Can you give us an example of one?
Sure.
Oh, sorry. Sorry, sorry.
No, you can go ahead. I just want to make sure.
Well, my question, so it, lower value to whom?
That's where I was going. Yeah.
If, if, if I'm a landowner and I have this, this, this manufacturing, obviously they're making a lot more money on the pieces that you're talking about getting rid of versus a manufacturer coming in. So I'm trying to understand to whom.
Yeah, a lower value in terms of employment, property tax, sales tax, environmental impacts, those.
So impacts to the city.
Yeah, and then the community as well.
Yeah, I was just gonna, it was kind of along with the same point that, uh, Marshall just made. I was curious if you, if you just had an example and you're talking about these businesses is going to go somewhere else.
Yeah, we had, um, a, I know Leesel, our new, uh, e- uh, economic development recruiter had had an assembler that wanted to come. Uh, they assembled oh, parts for, for automobiles. And, um, they were looking for a facility and couldn't find a facility and they ended up not coming to Ogden because they didn't have a facility. And that's example of, you know, we had a, a site in industrial zone that was being used for, that was being occupied for, you know, a gym or personal storage or stuff like that. That business could have come to Ogden, but, but they couldn't because they're just, they couldn't find the facility.
Couldn't they have approached one of those existing businesses and said, we'd like to make you an offer? I mean, if they really wanted to be here, could, is that an option?
Yeah, that's.
Right? That's, that's my point. I'm not, I'm just thinking that we, we can allow for these uses. We should. I, I don't disagree with your logic. I like where your head's at. I'd love your question.
I mean, they're going to have to purchase the property, whether it's just an empty field or if it's that business.
Are they looking for a ready-made move right in situation or are they, you know what I mean?
Yeah, it depends. Some, some want to move today, you know, they, their, their lease is where they are is, is runs out this, end of this month. They need something today. Some are looking ahead that, you know, hey, I want to move my facilities somewhere else. It, it varies.
We have another guest joining us.
I just invited myself. You need to call on me if you don't want to.
Sure, if you'd like to.
The chair, the chair, the chair, if you'd have the time, just be my friend.
And I guess also my other question is, I mean, I, I get why, and sometimes we ask you all to do this, like, let's just do it all the changes at once. So we don't have to keep bringing it back forward. But I do feel, for me personally, this is just so much in one package. But it's a little bit overwhelming to, because if you feel one way about one part of it, then it's hard to agree with the whole thing. And that's kind of what I'm hearing, right? And that's one of the challenges. And sometimes we want you to come to us with everything at once in a big package and that makes it a little bit easier and kind of faster for the processing system. But to me, I'm kind of hearing, and this is how I feel too. I'm like, well, on this one, I'm like, well, yeah, I get what you're saying. I'm, I'm moving to plan board. On this other one, you know, I'm not totally comfortable going there yet. So I think, but I know you'd like to say something too, but I, that's kind of what I'm hearing is different people have different opinions about elements of it. So it might be challenging to come to a consensus on the whole package.
And it's a, and it's a snapshot into what we're up against when the general plan is revised, so be ready. We've all been at needing it for it, but holy cow, are we going to be moving cheese, right? It's going to be hard.
Okay, man, sorry.
And that's really why I came, um, is to kind of put it in the context of that. So I asked Barton to look at this, um, and I think he's done a good job. Everybody's comments, I think are appropriate. And it is really a, uh, an algorithm and not an equation. You know what I mean? It's, it's not linear. There's so many different factors to deal with when you're looking at highest and best use of land versus existing, uh, ownership and rights versus growth and demand and those kind of things. So the, the approach was from a balanced perspective and looking at what we currently have versus what we um, could potentially have, right? Uh, versus what, um, we, uh, what the market is pushing us towards. So right now lenders are entirely favored towards storage units, car washes. Um, I, I, I think it's an interesting conversation that we're having now in the context of conversations about car washes and things that we've had in the past. And so a lot of times the market forces that are in play are not conducive to what we as a city would like them to be. Um, that's why you're seeing so many apartments because the lending environment was oriented towards lending on apartments and not condos, you know, as we've defined it in the past. Uh, same thing with car washes. We just met with a couple of lenders, uh, last week and their portfolios are largely focused on commercial projects that consist of storage units, um, and car washes. So as a city, we're trying to balance all of these things in terms of what we currently have versus what's happening in the future. And one of the tools that we have is the land use tool. Um, it's not perfect and it constantly is being changed. And so that's what I first wanted to say is we looked at this as, as a balancing act. Um, can we break these elements apart and look at some independent of others? I think that's appropriate. Uh, maybe there's a work, working group that we can get together. Maybe there's a time that, um, that we should set aside to, to look at this as we go through the zoning code update, which is what we're doing now. This is a kind of a outside process to that because there were, um, I think there was some urgency to look at it. Again, because market forces are driving the, the business practices of some to focus largely on these product types that we feel like we have enough of, storage units, um, uh, salvage yards, those kind of things. Also, our M1 zones are largely by our river assets. And so for decades and decades, the rivers have been used as utilitarian, um, facilities. And it wasn't until, you know, in our lifetimes that we've recently realized that these rivers are recreation amenities. And so peeling away, or at least not adding to, um, these unideal uses along our river frontage is an important step to take. And so by limiting, uh, especially salvage yards, which is probably the most environmentally impactful, um, is an important step to protecting our river assets and to start to create the change of, of moving away from those assets as facilities and, and putting back, putting them back into recreational use. So there's a lot to consider, all of which of, you know, your concerns are, are, are appropriate. So, um, I wa, I didn't want to leave Barton just strung out because I was the one who asked him to look at this. I think he's done a good job. But if we need to pull some of these apart and look at them independently, um, I don't know how we do that because it's all in the same zone, but maybe we have, uh, some different conversations about it. I think that's a great idea. If there's a way to do it like that, Brandon, that, that's what I would really appreciate. Because I don't disagree with everything you guys are presenting.
Hmm.
I, I think like Ben said, a lot of it makes sense. A lot of, some of it makes sense. Some of it to me doesn't. Like what you just talked about, the river, uh, uh, properties, that makes a lot of sense to me, right? So if you could break it up somehow and let us, you know, probably, you know, take it, take it into pieces and just be thoughtful about the different, the different, uh, uh, elements, uh, and how one stripping or limiting or right is going to affect, uh, our, the community. And while we're another, that, that will be important for me.
Jared.
Oh, sorry. Um, I was mentioning that he could go next and then you next.
I was just gonna say, I have that lived experience with the salvage yard along the river. So that part, I was already thinking along the line, those lines too. Um, the other thing that did make sense was having some of these M1 and M2 uses happening right in our downtown. And I think the good, the good news is that our downtown has, has largely succeeded and it's expanding and we, you know, and so if we've got some of those kind of boundary M1, M2s that are starting to encroach into that downtown district and area, then I think those are things we should, should be open to. So like you said, not everything didn't make sense to me. I just, but as on balance, it seems to me like a, a really strong armed kind of regulatory force into the use we're looking for. And it feels, um, in opposition to the, to the market demand, you know what I mean? So I'm, that's just where my instinct was.
Yeah, I'll speak to that, uh, uh, in a minute. Go ahead.
Oh, you know, I was kind of looking back and I, I get in my wayback machine a lot, you know, to just kind of see, okay, what, what do we learn from historically? You know, what, what can we learn from what we've already done? And, you know, 15, 20 years ago, we, we were alarmed by the amount of, uh, payday lenders that were, you know, coming in and, and, uh, so we said, okay, well, that's something our city needs and is it a benefit to our citizens? And, you know, and, and we figured that there was, you know, from every, uh, hundred people that you asked if this was a blessing to their life, uh, one of them might've said yes. Everybody else said, no, I just got in, you know, I, it was a problem. It cost me to be, it was a bigger problem than, than what I was starting to, to do. And, and so I'm, I'm looking at the land use thing. I, I'm a beggar. I, I love land use. Uh, you know, I'm a, I was planning commissioner for a long time. And so I get that we have to do this. But I think we maybe got to ask some different questions, um, a, about why we're doing it. And that's kind of where I'm at is, are we asking the right questions? Is it all just about value to the city or is it, uh, overall health of a, of a community and, um, you know, I, I, I do have a real problem when we start putting our thumb on private property owners hard, you know? I, and that's kind of, it's just philosophical to me. I mean, I don't disagree with a lot of what you're saying either. But, but I think we got to get there in a softer way or something. I don't know how, I don't, I don't have a recommendation. But we do have to ask the question, does this benefit to our, to our people?
And we're always aware of that. That's, that's, you know, I've said this before, our, our job is placemakers. So we take it very seriously that we're trying to create a, a community that, um, people can enjoy prosperity. And, and that's, that's like I said, a, uh, an algorithm. And there's not one linear, um, thing to that. So, um, as we look at creating a quality place, it's important that we, we look at those questions in the context of time too. So where are we today? We're not creating a new zone or a new city that is looking to, to servicing its, um, its citizens for the first time. We've had zoning cones, codes since the 50s, right? And we have been unwinding the consequences of some of those decisions for a lot of years. Case in point is the fact that we do have our river assets just clogged with these industrial uses. And we have spent millions of dollars, um, uh, saving our river from them. And so that's the balance that we're talking about. The balance is, are we serving our citizens with these uses already? And if we are, where's the line where we say there's a better, there's a better way? We have enough, we have enough to, to provide that particular thing to our citizens. And where's that line? And then what we, do we do beyond that line? And in the case of storage units and salvage yards in particular, uh, we say that we have enough of those to service our citizens. And to continue to allow more is not in the best interest of what that land possibly could be based on either current demand or future demand, which we, which we know, um, will be there, given what has been there in the past. We are a manufacturing community. BDO is 30 years ahead of its time. Ogden, um, the, uh, the Ogden Business Park, um, in West Ogden, um, has been successful for many years. We have lots of one-off companies. So by and large, our manufacturing zones is the only place that we can thrive in that industry. And so we know that creation of space for that industry to thrive is the highest and best use. And that means that we're going to have to look at eliminating some uses that are less so, but only if they are, if we are to a point where we have balance. And that's kind of the approach that we've taken.
Have we surveyed, uh, occupancy percentage of storage units? Have, have, have you done that? And the reason I ask is because, you know, when I have tried to get one, it's not all that easy to find a vacant one.
I think, I think he looked at that anecdotally therefore.
Yeah, yeah. Well, and we didn't do occupancy, but we did look at square feet per population. And we are, we're above what the market analysis says we should have for the community. So.
Some people just get rid of some of their stuff.
Yeah. The other thing is, is we are building, uh, so many apartments that don't have any place to store their stuff.
True, but I did some research on that actually, because I heard that comment about apartments were driving, wanting more personal storage. And that's not the only problem. It's people with five people households that have no space left for all of their crap. So people have a lot of stuff. People need to get rid of some of their stuff. Um, well, I just have a question too about the timeline, I guess, because what I'm hearing is we're asking for several other things to happen. But it looks like this is pending ordinance is going to expire in the middle of October. So I guess I, I just have curiosity and this is not a criticism whatsoever, but if this pending ordinance thing was posted in April and now we're having a conversation at almost mid to end September and it's going to expire next month. I mean, what happens in all that other time leading up to here?
It was really all the research that got to, uh, bringing up to the planning commission and drafting the ordinance and, and then bringing it to you. So.
Yeah. Anyway, that's, we just always find ourselves on this time crunch. And so just a concern to me because we say, well, we want to go back to the drawing board, then your, your pending ordinance is going to expire, right? And I guess I'm trying to catch on after six years, but.
Yeah.
I mean, what happens with that?
Then you're going to get some applications for, uh, junkyards and personal storage units on the day it expires.
Exactly. So it's a challenge.
Is that what precipitated the pending ordinance? Was it applications for uses we didn't like or?
Well, it was the, the overall direction that we saw we were going and that, and that yes, if we didn't do something, that's, we were going to get more of the same. Um, we had, have several people interested in doing storage units, several, you know, junkyards and, and, and some just other industrial buildings with, we didn't get to design standards, but just things that we knew that if we waited, you know, those things would be part of our community for the next 80 years and we just have to live with that. So.
And, and the market signals that I mentioned. You know, this idea of where the lending practices are and where people are, um, choosing to make their equity investments and those kind of things. All of those things came together and it was in real time. It was happening before us based on the applications that we were seeing. So it was important to study. I think you've done a good job studying it and these are good questions.
Yeah. So what will happen after this?
Uh, well, it's, I think it's temporarily under schedule for a, a regular session on it. I guess it's up to Janine if we want to have another work session on that before then.
Questions brought up. I don't know if there's specific things you all would like to happen before it become, comes on the public meeting.
Yeah, I might suggest that we, I don't know how you do this procedurally, but we could put some things up as sort of a decision point, you know? Point eight, are you for or against? Top of two, are you for or against? Top three, are you for or against? I don't know how you do that, uh, logistically.
Sorry, was, was this for, for a, for a regular meeting or?
Right. And it just seems like we have a lot of questions or other things we want to explore, but they have a pending deadline of April 16th or 17th or, sorry, October. Um, and we have two meetings or something before that. So that's just what I'm trying to do.
Sorry, I'm sorry. What, what happens, uh, with that deadline?
Because it's a pen, um, there was a notice of pending ordinance. I don't know why I'm the one explaining this. So it only has a certain amount of time that they can do that. So that means anybody that wants to do that right now can't do it because there's a pending ordinance. So that's what he's saying is on that date, if we don't pass this or if it doesn't come up for a vote, that pending ordinance will expire, expire, I was going to say, die, but it expire. Um, and then everybody will put in their applications on that day to be able to do some of these projects and. Yeah. So there you go.
So it means there's been a lot of private property owners and businesses in limbo waiting.
They're waiting to see if it's going to pass or not.
So.
So, so, I mean, I, okay. So if it's been that pressing, why is it just coming right now?
That's what she just asked.
And I'm not trying to be rude. I was like, why? And this happens to us continually in these situations where there's this pending ordinance thing. And then. We feel like, you know, we can make a decision, but it doesn't sound right now like we have a lot of consensus. So. I'm saying what what can we do in the next couple of meetings to figure out how to support the things we do support and not support the things we don't.
So we do have a meeting scheduled on the twenty sixth. Right now, there's nothing on the work session. So we could. If you want to have an additional work session, you could do it then. Um, there's some noticing required, so we couldn't get it on the meeting. Until uh October third. And we also planned that if you weren't ready to take action, that could be continued over. To October tenth, although right now we weren't really going to schedule a meeting that, but that's a, that's the RDA night. So we could. Theoretically have two more work sessions on this before it was on a regular agenda.
What's the drop dead date was sixteenth? That's just a figure saying? Okay.
So this doesn't, I I mean, you can still put a storage unit on it. Just has to be more than one story or one story, correct? Did I read that? I must have read that.
The proposal was you could, if you do it above the first floor, you could do that. The ground floor would have to be for like contractors offices or.
Oh, it would have to be for retail.
Flex industrial or stuff like that, but then upper story you could.
It it couldn't be a, it couldn't be a three-story Cubix kind of thing.
Uh, as long as the first story was something other than Cubix, you could.
Yeah, that's gonna be, I mean, it just changes the whole cost.
Yeah. And there are facilities that do that.
Right.
And that's really the question that we're asking you to consider is raising the standard without abandoning. The community need, right? So have we fulfilled the community need with these services? I think Barton has shown that we have disproportionately done so in both the case of salvage yards and storage units. And so can we still?
Sorry, have we not, have we not done so in other areas besides those two?
Uh, we, well, I'm just addressing those because it seems like those are the two that are the ones that came up.
Okay.
Um, but yes, there's many things that I think Ogden does well at serving the community needs with. Um, and some things that we can do better, right? But in the case of these two, can we, as we move forward, um, require a a higher standard? Without um, without diminishing our ability to provide the service to the community. And I think that balance can be found. And it's up to you to determine um where that balance is. And it really does lead into this question of what do you want the community to look like and be like over the next fifty years? When we go into this general plan exercise, the Ogden of of the last fifty years has certainly been. One of um various things and we've, we've. Worked really hard to chip away at the things that we don't want and enhance the things that we do want. We have the ability to to reshape that vision for the next fifty years. Um, so are we going to be primarily primarily known as? The um repository for junkyards in Weber County? Um, or are we going to be primarily known for the high-tech manufacturing hub? I mean, those are just two really kind of blatant examples, but.
Yeah, the junkyard, to me, I kind of like your idea, Barton, of saying, okay, which one yay or nay on this part or yay or nay on that part? Because the junkyard, I totally get behind what you're saying and the rivers, et cetera. This other use, of course, you know, thinking about the recreation that's in manufacturing zones or even. Possibly the standards around some of that too, you know. Think, to me, that's what I'm hearing is the challenge that some people are agreeing with some parts of it, but not all. So maybe that is a good next step to. Break it down by each one of those.
Well, Chair, I I I think with, you know, I mean. We can make a new zone, right, too.
Yes.
Yeah.
And uh and say, okay, well, let's divide this thing up a little bit and 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 so for the recreation. We gotta, we gotta enter our recreation zone or whatever we want to call it, you know, that, and this is what it will allow.
Can I do that in the next three weeks?
Yeah, well, I don't know.
Barton's good.
Yeah. That that I think is is, that's what I kept thinking in my mind is how do you, how do you make the puzzle fit this?
Right.
And that's what it is. It's a zoning puzzle.
How do we make room for what we're after, not? What I'm worried about is with existing businesses. Like, I like the idea of having those uses and transitioning into it into those kinds of uses, especially if there's a demand for it. But not at the cost of just leveraging others out, you know what I mean? And so I was actually thinking the same thing. Could we divide this into some other zone? I am sure that would still move some cheese, right? But essentially, that's where my head went to.
Yeah, and I.
Go ahead.
Well, and I was just gonna say, that's kind of what we did on Twenty Fifth Street and limiting the number of. Alcoholic establishments, you know? I mean, so we created a zone where we only can do so many linear block or whatever. I I don't see why we couldn't do something similar. I don't know, I'm. Right.
Barton, the gears are turning.
Honestly, really enlightening conversation, right? It's been a, one of those issues that came up and it forces you to think, right?
For sure.
Like, oh, man, this is a.
Nobody's gonna bring out the adult entertainment for sure.
I mean, people have the right.
This is Councilman Nobody.
Yeah, nobody's gonna bring that in. Um, did you have any thoughts or comments, uh, Councilmember Blair? I just, I see you over there thinking.
Yeah, that's I'm just trying to think. I mean, I it. Because I really do agree with what Brandon's trying to. Explain and I I I agree, I. I've seen where Ogden was and where it's coming or transitioning to. And so I. I I I whole, I I whole hardly understand the direction that 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 this. Is trying to get us to, but yeah, but there was some thoughts that came up today that made me have to think a little bit more. So that's, I'm just. Trying to wrap my head around it, trying to see what I, how how far that philosophical issue pushes me, that's all.
It sounds like we do need at least one more work session.
All right. Do you want to do it next week then? So and so that there's another week before you'd actually take action. And then I guess you can still talk about it. The the week that it's on the agenda.
And do you feel good about bringing something back for us to discuss? Okay.
Yeah, I, that's what I'm here.
Some of the people wanted to hear what question.
I'm a zoning nerd. I'm happy to talk.
So can I just ask, I mean, when we talked about creating a new zone. In my mind, and just tell me if I'm wrong or understanding this correctly, in my mind, it would seem easier to. Move forward with this and then once that's established, then create new zones after that. My, is that, would that be the easiest way or walk me through that?
It could happen that way, I think.
That's what I was thinking, the safer way. Okay, just just wanted to make sure.
Yeah.
I mean, you can do whatever is within your power.
Uh, you'll hear from um many folks, I'm sure, but the folks you probably won't hear from are the folks that we deal with and that is. Um, businesses, you know, corporations seeking for relocation or expansion and site selectors who work for them. And in a lot of cases, zoning, um, so from a site selection perspective. Um, there's a mix of just a checklist of things that a site selector will look for in terms of um site eligibility. And then over the last few years, that's kind of evolved into this um. Uh, quality of place equation as well. So it's no longer just, do you check the box with water, power, sewer? You know, transportation access, but it's now, what's the quality of life? What's the um, what's the sense of place? But zoning is the very first place that everyone starts. And when you have um. When you have very difficult things in a zone to either acquire or redevelop. Then site selectors do have a difficult time finding uh a appropriate site for a use that is permitted, but can't. Find a location because other permitted things that are of a lower density or a lower value or a lower. Um, land use are occupying. And so it's not as easy just to say, you know, knock on the door, can I buy your stuff? Because storage units are um notoriously known for being very, very difficult to acquire and remove. Just because they cash flow so well. So once you have that, um, a redevelopment scenario is almost impossible unless somebody is going to. Cash that facility out. Um, so you have to be just careful about that. And so the people you won't hear from. Are the businesses and the expanding um uh industries that are looking for places like this. That want to have uh quality facilities, but otherwise may not be able to do it because the zone. Um, isn't quite, is either too broad or too narrow, right?
Can I ask just what, what businesses does the BDO not serve that would be appropriate to this area?
What businesses does the?
Like, we have, like, when you, idle entertainment, one, okay. But like you say, there's, as we, as we approach these, you know, the economic developments, looking for uh. Companies to come in, are, is the BDO not appropriate for some of those locations that M one, M two is appropriate?
So BDO um. Has a a wide berth in terms of what is allowable there, but there's a couple of things that um. Cause people to look elsewhere elsewhere. Number one, uh, ownership, they have zero ownership there. Well, not zero, but. The boyer part of everything, it doesn't have ownership. Um, and then they limit or restrict outdoor storage. So if you're. Um, uh, distribution warehouse that relies heavily on a backyard lot, BDO is not for you.
Okay.
Uh, so there are some limitations, plus BDO is running out of space. So we're rapidly. Um, getting out of the new developable land and just focusing more on the existing buildings, which aren't contemporarily. Um, suited in terms of ceiling height and clear span and all that kind of stuff. So, yeah, looking in in our environment where we, we have a very diverse economy, but. Um, our manufacturing industry and it's striated, you know, in lots of different ways, but just that manufacturing column. Um, we're heavily set there and it's, it's wonderful. And so. As we look at how narrow or broad we should be in terms of these zones that manufacturing can only go to. We have to be very careful about what else we put in there in terms of, because manufacturing can't go anywhere else. There are some places that those other things can go to.
Well, thank you for such robust conversation. Our time is almost up because we do have to leave this meeting a little early to get in there. Five minutes early for the Board of Canvassers.
Hey, one other, sorry, one other, are there other. Uh, zoning other than the downtown that I can think of, but are there other areas where we have done that before? Have we, have we changed a zone before, just like this, or limited?
Uh, the only one I know of is the downtown. When we did the downtown zoning, we, that was all based on the same sort of analysis. What's, what's the most valuable to our community and things like that, but.
Can't think of anything.
Yeah.
Thanks, Barton.
You're welcome.
And Tracy, where are you going to present in here also or just out there? Does, anybody have any questions for Tracy about the primary election results? It looks like there's at least one.
I have a question. So we know that a a person dropped out of the at-large race. What happens next?
Uh, state code provides the the process if they drop out after the primary, but sixty-five days before. The general election, then the next person moves up into that space.
So there's no action. We don't have to do any action. It'll just be automatic.
The results will be on on the um. On the report for the board tonight, and then you would approve that. Um, but state code does provide and the references on that sheet, so. Great, that outlines the procedure.
Great. Thank you. Doesn't look like anybody else has questions. Great. Anything, any business, Janine?
Just a couple of things. So we've had a request um to hold a meeting on October twenty-fourth. That is a fourth Tuesday. Um, and the reason uh. The for the request is that the consultants on the Zone Ogden, the. Um, the reason that's going on will be here that evening and for the, for a next day. Public input session and they're traveling. So. Um, just wondering if if you'd be amenable to have that meeting on the twenty-fourth, might just be just a work session. Um, and I guess I need to know if you want to start at four or if you want to start later. Uh, there is actually five Tuesdays in October. Um, so you'd still get a a break. Uh, the other option I was thinking about is. You know, if for, if you do take action on this M one, M two on the third, we don't have any RDA items for the. Tenth, so we could just cancel that meeting and not have meetings that night. So in that case, you'd still just have three, three nights that you're here in the month.
That um date would work for me. I would love if we could start at five, but that's just my own personal opinion. But did you also want to talk a little bit about that with everybody? Sometimes we're starting at different times and I don't know if that's difficult for people or. For me, it's really nice to have an extra hour once in a while, so I don't mind, but I don't know how everybody else is feeling about that.
And that was what I was going to ask, is it, would you rather have the start times fluctuate and be a little inconsistent? Or would you rather have me try and.
Cram it all.
Congregate things on meetings so that you don't have a meeting at all, but you have a longer meeting on the nights that you're here.
The latter for me personally.
Ramon, together.
I mean, I'll go with the flow, but.
Yeah, I I I think the latter is pretty attractive. Like, it was an eye raiser, you know, no meeting versus wonky times, no meeting.
Okay.
Right.
Yeah.
We did say, yeah, we were talking about even if we just don't have a work session at all one night, we should probably start. Just a little bit earlier so we can review the agenda. Sometimes there's questions about what's going to happen in the meeting or something. So we thought about starting at five thirty on those nights. Only because otherwise we just go right to the dais at six and then. You know, sometimes you have questions about the agenda or other things and there may not be time for that necessarily. So. Thoughts about that?
I mean, we used to, when we did the work sessions after the meetings, we always started at five thirty, which is probably what I would suggest if there's. If there's not a, any work session items. And I just, I appreciate you uh reminding us.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a nice reminder.
Hey, let us know. Tonight is at this time. Awesome. Yeah, well, and I do feel a little bit better, you know, because we were talking about the impact to public for attending the work session or hearing it or whatever. But I do feel better about the fluctuating times since we do have it all electronically available. In the past, people would have had to come at a certain time. So that's a little bit different, but if we get feedback or something about that, then let me know because. I feel like it's a little bit okay because we do have the electronic version now happening. So people can follow up later if they miss it or either way, so. Great. Yeah. Thank you all so much. And that dinner was delicious.